So what I'm suggesting to the board, as difficult as it will be, if you can hold your questions until we get done with all these presentations, and then we'll proceed from there. So get your pads out and write some notes down if attempt to move along. Vaughn, briefly, the agency's point of view on this. You notice how I always say "briefly" to Vaughn?
Emphasize that. I've noticed that as well, Mr. Chairman. Vaughn Altimus, the Agency of Education. Secretary Holcomb's recommendation is that the State Board of Education should approve the Chittin-Neese Modified Unified Union School District Voluntary Merger Committee Report, which calls for all elementary districts to vote on whether to form a modified unified union district. It's important to keep in mind that the secretary isn't recommending that the State Board of Education approve or endorse the proposal. The question the secretary considered when making her recommendation, and the secretary's asking you to consider, is whether the Voluntary Merger Committee's report should be submitted to the voters of the member districts for consideration. In other words, not that the board is in favor of it, but that the board believes it is in a condition where it's reasonable for the voters in each of the communities to have the discussion and then have a vote. I won't go into Modified Unified Union School District. In case there are questions, I'll be happy to answer. But I think people are generally aware of the fact that there were a number of regional education district votes where a majority of districts supported the regional education district, and a minority of districts, or in some cases, one single district, opposed it. And under the law at that time, that was enough to stop the process. There were several districts, Chittin-Neese fairly, or S.U.'s, Chittin-Neese prominent among them, that went to the legislature and made the case that the result was actually not local control, but the ability of one locality to exercise a veto over a majority of other localities. And the result was that the legislature passed the Modified Unified Union School District bill.
Which is commonly referred to as Act 156?
It's one piece of Act 156. It's an Act 156.
I'm just was making sure the board was up.
And it was amended further in Act 56, which expanded the authority. They can set a number larger than a majority, they can name necessary. But absolutely.
Great. Thank you, Vaughn.
And so I believe that--
Is there someone--
Mr. Bergini, and Mr. Marx, and Mr. Peabody are here for the majority position.
If you gentlemen would start by introducing yourselves, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Marx, I'm the Chair of the Voluntary Merger Committee. Seated to my left is John Alberghini, the Superintendent of the Chittin-Neese Supervisory Union. Seated to my right is Christopher Leopold, who has been legal counsel both to the Voluntary Merger Committee and to our Supervisory Union. And seated to my far right is John Malazo, who is the Vice Chair of the Committee and also Chair of the Richmond Elementary School Board. And in my spare time, I serve as a member of the Mount Mansfield Union School Board. So I appreciate the opportunity to present to you today our work as a merger committee. And it has been a long process to bring us to this moment. The Chittin-Neese Supervisory Union conducted a very extensive study of a regional education district in 2010 and 2011 that ultimately resulted in a vote in which four of our communities approved the merger and two turned it down. And consequently, of course, under the structure that was then in place, the merger failed. That was, though, a very healthy process for our communities. It gave us an opportunity to stop, think, and discuss what are the things that we really are concerned about in terms of school governance? And should we be rethinking the model that we had in place in our Supervisory Union? Now ours, like many in Vermont, is a unique model. For 50 years, we have educated our children in grades five through 12 through the Mount Mansfield Union School District. But we've also maintained six distinct elementary school districts, educating our children in grades pre-K through four. And of course, as a consequence, to bind all that together, we have a Supervisory Union. And if one adds up the total membership, we have 56 distinct and, I might say, highly opinionated members of eight different boards who govern education in a school district that for 50 years has combined to educate all its children in grades five through 12. Now, board members and community members and staff members, in response to the red thought some more. And the more we reflected on it, I would say there was a growing sentiment, certainly not a unanimous sentiment, but a growing sentiment, that in order to provide effectively for the education of children, to efficiently manage resources, and also to allow our administrators the ability to devote their time to working on educational issues, as opposed to coordinating governance decisions, that we needed a better model. Now, in response to this in part, and into other issues around the state, the legislature adopted the Modified Unified Union School District. And in a nutshell, what it says is that communities have the opportunity, if a majority of the elementary school districts concur, to form a unified school district. And those opting out would continue to maintain their elementary school governance, but those opting in would have a unified structure for all students and expenditures, grades pre-K through 12. So the boards of our district unanimously voted to open a study process. And I guess I drew the short straw, so I got to be Chair of the Study Committee. And we began our work intensively in November of last year. And we've had a total of 14 public meetings, including a community forum for the entire district. We have studied numerous background documents, both in our committee and outside on our individual efforts. We've taken public comment at all our public meetings. And what you have in front of you is the fruit of our effort. In a nutshell, the majority of us, and I know there are those who disagree, and I would count them my neighbors and my friends, and I respect their viewpoints and ask you to consider their viewpoints and respect them as well. But the majority of us have reached the following conclusions. One, that it does not make sense to have fragmented government, especially for a community like ours. Two, that as we face some of the pressures that we now see in our schools, that is a luxury we cannot afford. In our last go-around, we had three of our local school budgets defeated on the first try. And for the high school, that was something that was virtually unprecedented in recent memory. Two of our elementary schools, small elementary schools, report to us that in the absence of the efficiencies that they think they can obtain if they are part of a unified district, and also because of the state funding mechanism, which, as we know, places penalties on schools that exceed the excess spending threshold, that they see their schools in serious jeopardy. And our administrators report to us that their ability to provide the kind of educational leadership that we expect from them, and which we know they are fully capable of providing, is something that's simply handicapped. And those key considerations led us to realize that, as a majority, we think we need to move forward, we think we need to present to the voters this option, and we believe it is an option that provides for our communities a viable alternative, so that we can consider the education of students on a continuous basis, from the moment they enter our system till the day that they graduate. So that we can evaluate budgetary decisions, not in eight isolated segments, but on a cohesive whole for all of our students. So that we can, where efficiencies are available, and truly they are available, employ them by uniting services and staff, as opposed to having the artificial barriers that stop us today. Now, I know you will be hearing dissenting viewpoints, well-articulated, I am sure, and passionately held. And I ask you, as I said before, to consider them. But in the end, I hope that you will realize that this is an idea, at least in our Supervisory Union, whose time has come. And it is time for us to give the voters a chance to evaluate the hard work and the careful consideration that we, as a committee, have provided. So I don't know if there are any questions at this time, or you'd like to defer them, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to defer.
I have one factual question.
We'll allow the member from--
Goshen.
Goshen to ask.
You said unanimously agreed to move forward after the red went down or the pre-mud went down. You said the six towns voted unanimously. Did that include the two who had defeated it before?
Each of the six elementary boards voted to open this study to assess whether a Modified Unified Union District would be in the best interest of the Supervisory Union.
Thank you.
Has a date been set, assuming that this passes today? When are the towns going to be voting on this?
The towns would be voting at the November general election. And parenthetically, that was a critical part of our deliberations, Mr. Chairman. The November general election was one where we thought we could maximize public participation. And if we fail to meet that date, we would be obligated to put this off for a whole nother year's budget cycle, because when you fit all the dates together for budget hearings and election of school board members, they don't work. And frankly, two of our small school districts told us they didn't have time to wait. And we felt, in the end, as a committee, that we had pretty exhaustively, certainly exhaustingly, but exhaustively researched and studied the issue.
Do any of you other three gentlemen have anything you'd like to add at this point? It was a great presentation, so I don't know if you have anything more, but you're more than welcome to speak.
No, thank you.
You'll be here, so if we have questions later--
We're not leaving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to just say that this was really well put together, including the minority report and your response. We got color versions, which even helped. I applaud-- you can see that a lot of time and effort went into this.
Yeah, oh yeah.
I'm trying to help you out over here. I want you running.
Okay. Now, we're aware that there was a minority report through this study. Is someone here representing the minority? Would you kindly introduce yourself before you start?
Is that in a good place for you to hear? My name is Meg Keer. I'm an elementary school board member from Huntington, Brewster Pierce Elementary School. And I sit as a committee member for the merger study. And I did write the minority report. I've been in touch with many people in my extended community, particularly Richmond and Huntington, because I live sort of in both those communities, and have spent quite a bit of time in both those communities, having worked in the library in Richmond, as well as put my children through school in Huntington. I have not prepared a careful statement. I don't know if you folks have had a chance to read my minority statement. I do have prepared responses to the response, but I won't burden you with that unless you would like to ask some questions about the committee's response to my minority report. I'll be happy to do so. But let me outline some of my concerns. First of all, I am not adamantly opposed to the concept of our six elementary districts and our three high schools, the two middle and the high school, working together more efficiently. I welcome the concept and would like to see a well-crafted study developed in which we could take the structure we have and build on it. I agree that we do work well together as a five-town, six-district community. One of my concerns, actually, is that this vote may be divisive to our communities rather than bringing us together as we are now. Because some of the reasons that people have for not wanting to proceed is the idea of a modified union, in which some will be in and some will be out, is not a positive thing. Meanwhile, what are the reasons why some people are reluctant? Well, there are several key points, which I'll try to highlight here. Many folks came into this with an open mind in the community and asked, "Well, what is it we're trying to fix?" The biggest problems in education primarily are in two big categories. One is cost, efficiency, and the other is the students who are falling between the cracks, the gap between the rich and the poor. And so those are the big issues we want to make sure we're addressing. And it's very important that, if we're going to go through a big governance change, that we, in fact, are fixing these issues. Because these are the issues that, at the bottom of the day, at the end of the day, are what we need to be dealing with. It is not clear that this merger is going to save any money. And in fact, in the short run, Chittin-Neese will be the recipient of funds from the state, which will pay for transition, which is going to pay for lawyers and accountants, it's not going to pay for more education. There will be costs that we will get from, we will get money from the state for incentives, tax incentives. So if it's not coming out of our pocket, it's coming out of somebody else's pocket in the state, because all that money comes out of the state. So as much as I am a taxpayer and love to see my property taxes reduced, because I do pay property taxes, I feel morally that it's very important that if we proceed with this, it shouldn't be just a shuffling of tax money where we in Chittin-Neese are getting an advantage that other people aren't. You'll see that the report does not claim to save much money. So that, more or less, has been admitted, that it's not going to be a big tax saver, a big cost saver, but it may save us some taxes because of incentives. The bigger question, then, is how is it going to improve education? Some folks are hoping that there will be some opportunities, but I do not feel that we, as a committee, carefully studied in a way that you could say is scientific and developing hypotheses, improving those hypotheses, to show that we are going to have improved education. As far as our communities working well together, 50 years ago, when our communities came together and literally built the middle schools and built the high school, we, of course, have worked together well as a five communities for that. And it does work well. When you're talking about the elementary schools, the children go to school in their own communities, and I don't think anybody wants to see the elementary students join together, traveling far. So we're talking about the same buildings that have been built by individual communities, where there's a lot of local involvement. And I would hope that we could continue that, whether we join together as a unified district or remain as we are. However, it concerns me that we were unable to reach any decision about whether to allow for something called a school council. One reason I would like to delay the proceeding with this is that there are several things that I do feel we need to consider more carefully before we make this big governance change. And one is that I'd like to see a provision developed through careful analysis and discussion for school councils, so that we, as communities, can feel that we're continuing to have local input into our schools. So I'd like to see that develop before we say yes. Let's go ahead with this. Some other things that I'd like to see worked on before we proceed. This merger is going to hopefully provide some new opportunities for elementary schools in choice. At least that is the expressed wish of the committee. This is probably particularly true for the three elementary schools that are geographically close. I am from a community that probably won't benefit from that, because geographically, Chittin-Neese is a long, skinny geographic area, and we're at the very southern end. But Jericho, Underhill, and Underhill Center, they're close together. So they're hoping to see some opportunities for school choice. Something that has not been addressed is, if school choice is the norm in a new system, how will transportation be dealt with? And will all students in this new unified district be allowed to go to any school? And will the district pay for that? That's an unanswered question I'd like to see studied. Another issue is that, in talking about school choice, we are simply talking about elementary. We're not talking about changing any choices for the middle and high schools. Personally, having raised children from K right through college, my own sense is that if we were to say, "What are some of the issues we'd like to deal with, to make better?" I would see creating opportunities for more high school choice. We have a great high school, you know, don't get me wrong. I really like our high school, I like our middle schools. But I do feel that there's a very limited number of students in any community who might want to study something such as Arabic, or Japanese, or high-level engineering courses. And you can only do that, perhaps, by joining in with larger districts or larger entities. So myself, I would see looking at studying school choice merger opportunities that would give high school kids more opportunities, not just the elementary. And if we're going to spend all this money to do a merger, I'd like to get the merger right. So I would add that to my list of things that are undone. Another issue that hasn't been addressed with the transportation is, since we are bound by no child left behind, I believe, I believe that within a district, if one school is not providing adequately and another is, that I believe that that guarantees that those students have the opportunity to go to other schools in the district. Again, that's a transportation issue. Are we, as a new school district, going to be obligated to provide transportation costs? That's a question I'd like to see addressed. I also feel that the communities that are now paying taxes have unanswered questions, that the committee has not looked into. There's been a lot of talk about how it's going to save taxes, but that really is kind of a smoke-and-mirrors thing, because it's just money coming from the state. There's been no description pulled together of all the school assets and liabilities. And I think that voters should have that. They should see, you know, I'm from a community that has, perhaps, a lower tax rate than some of the other districts in Chittin-Neese. So we have less of a motivation, because our taxes are already manageable. But I do think that districts like ourselves may face higher taxes down the road, once the incentives are done, because our budget is more contained than some of the others. So I do feel like that needs to be looked into. I'd like to make a point also about the process. As I said, I represent the elementary, the Brewster Pierce School Board on the committee. I came to the committee, representing my school board, with the understanding that we were going to be studying merger options. We had been presented at the joint school board meeting, and I'd like you to know that we do hold joint elementary school board meetings already, so it's not as if this can't happen. But at our April joint school board meeting, or carousel meeting, we were presented with the new description of the merger law and the different merger options that had been created by the amended law, which included such things as a union elementary district, and outlined the various incentives and transition monies that were available. I was under the understanding, and it was spelled out to us at our school board meeting, that we would be discussing, as a merger committee, the various merger options. However, the merger committee, from day one, considered only the Modified Unified School merger option. I feel that was a mistake, and that more discussion of merger options should have been One of my biggest concerns, and I'll try to wrap this up. One of my biggest concerns is that, right now, we have a terrific high school, we've got a very functional, well-busy high school board with 15 members. They're dealing with the curriculum and issues, age-appropriate issues, for middle and high school. If we pass this Modified Unified Union School District change, we will have the same-size school board, but we will no longer have all the elementary boards that are looking in on the individual elementary schools. Instead, we will have the same-size board, managing what they're managing now, but also managing six additional elementary school buildings, which are up to an hour apart from each other. Each building is in a community where the community members are familiar with the school, but from one end of the district to the other, we all aren't acquainted with each other's buildings and its issues. So the oversight of the facilities and the oversight of pre-K through 12 is all going to happen by the same number of people, one school board. This is one reason, again, I feel like we need to talk seriously about school councils before we go ahead with this.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I assume you'll be available if questions come up later on. I'm assuming that there are other members of the public that would like to address this issue here? Yes, in the back there? Could you come to the table and introduce yourself?
Let's do it. Oh, my God.
In the interests of time, I would ask everyone to be as concise and to the point as you possibly can, so we get the benefit of what you have to say, but we get to come to a conclusion this afternoon. Start with your names, please.
So my name is Suraj Khushwaha, and this is my brother Akash. And I'm a rising senior at Mount Mansfield.
I'm going to be a sophomore.
And you're brothers, but you're together on this issue?
Yeah.
That's unusual.
True, that's true. I wanted to come for you today to advise against the merger, or even proposition of it coming to a vote. I'm well aware of the financial difficulties that we're facing. I'm actually student member of MNU's Finance Committee. And earlier this summer, I actually had the privilege to be elected Lieutenant Governor of Boy's State, which is a camp that is like a mock state government, in which we passed a bill against this kind of merger with complete consensus. I'm extremely proud of the education that this district provides. And it seems to me that the movement to redistrict, while it may seem logical, is, in reality, a drastic overcorrection in response to increased taxes and the desire for a quick fix. It would be easy to consolidate school boards and not have to deal-- It would be easy to consolidate school boards and not have to deal with the messiness that arises from many people holding power in school decisions, but that would be rejecting the messiness that's inherent to democracy, the basic ideal in which our government functions. When I have kids, I know I want to raise them in Vermont, because I know what a great education the state can provide. And I implore you to please reconsider any action that has even the slightest chance to prove detrimental to the standard. America's great because so many people have a voice, and so many people can impact decisions. Likewise, our school system, I believe there's an analogy there, is great because there are so many people across the multitude of school boards, eight, I believe, is mentioned, that have a say and that really care about their close-to-home schools. Decreasing this number of people by consolidating the power in one school board, I believe, will jeopardize the integrity, just the attention that these people will be able to give. There won't be as many people to give attention across the different schools. It'll, and eventually, even the quality of our education could decrease. I ask that you please don't let this happen, as Vermont certainly needs all the attraction it can get right now to keep young people like myself and my brother in the state, knowing that it's a great place to live and excellent place to raise educated children.
And would you like to add something?
These small, local schools, of which I spent four years in, are very important for the development of all children, obviously. And BPMS, Brewster Pierce Memorial School, the school my brother and I both went to, I feel that they excelled at their duty to educate both of us. And I believe this is so because these small, local schools have enough time and have enough space to focus on individuals, not the success of an entire group, but the success of every single student at each school.
And not only are these schools part of our school system, but they're community centers owned by the community, which I believe, if I understand it correctly, this redistricting would put that ownership of the schools eventually into a much smaller group of people. They're owned by the community, and just from personal experience, we've been involved in scouting, which is held at Brewster Pierce, involved in Tang Sudou, local martial art that the instructor holds at Brewster Pierce. And it's not just, like, decisions about who gets to use that space should be made by people within those communities. That's what we believe.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Are there other, yes, sir? Please identify yourself.
Sure. First, thanks for the opportunity. I'm Bob Lowe. I'm a resident of Richmond since 1970. I can be brief, because as you know, I presume my wife and I have sent you a letter which details the reasons why we do not favor a modified district, but would like to see a full merger take place. You also will realize, if you've looked at that document, that I have spent my entire adult life in education, all the way from university provost to member of the MMU board. I'll be teaching some of the CES graduates next week. They are wonderful. I will speak for myself. I guess basically, I want to say, I have found what has unfolded most troubling in my experience in all levels of education, most troubling by a wide margin, I think, because of the process that took place. You have before you the issues that I put forward in the letter, so I won't say very much about them. I will just simply iterate some of the things that were said already about process, and then make a recommendation to you as to what I think you should do. The issues that we, that I rose, raised had to do with the top-down nature and the closed nature of this process, which you've heard about before. I concluded long ago, it was a foregone conclusion. I noted lack of responsiveness to community input, as best I can tell from my direct experience and reading minutes. I see no evidence of evaluation of the pros, cons, the basis of a decision and the rationale for coming to them. As a professional scientist, I always look for that in my scientific life, I always look for that in my administrative life as an academic leader. New perspectives, you'll note perhaps, if you want to go back to the March 3, 2011 Volunteer Committee minutes, where it specified the committee was to look at advantages and disadvantages. I haven't seen any discussion since of the disadvantages. If you look at the frequently asked questions, last updated December 16, 2013, the recommendation was that the school districts must approve the recommendation before it goes to the state. And finally, the volunteer committee charged, for the iteration of the last committee, had the word, has the word, evaluation. Consolidation is highly desirable. I think it's essential that it be done right for the benefit of our children's education, and I would urge that this process continue. My recommendation to you is as follows. I think I would recommend you send this back to the volunteer committee, asking them for a time-certain revision, which demonstrates broader community membership and input, evidence-based evaluation and recommendations. What is the issue? What is the background? What are the alternatives? What was the choice? And why? And clear evidence of what I think in the record says is a promised two-way community dialogue. This is really critical for the educations of our kids, as you've just heard. I think it's going too fast. I very much want to see a consolidation that I think will work. I'm worried that this one may cause getting to yes in that regard to take much longer and be much more difficult. And I can sit ready for questions about what I just said, or what is in the letter-
Let me ask you a brief question. As the, as the report indicated, or the reporters of the report indicated, that the vote is, assuming approval here today, would be scheduled for November of this year.
Correct.
And so when I asked the question about that date, he gave a pretty thorough answer about the effect of, what would happen if it wasn't this, this November, as opposed to next year sometime?
Mm-hmm.
And your recommendation is to go back to the committee and revise, work on some things. My question is, you know, what's your response to the urgency on the vote?
One of my concerns has been, in fact, the urgency, this was a self-imposed urgency by the structure at CESU. I think that we have to watch out for the trap that says there are individuals out there who want to put this aside forevermore and never get us to yes, which I'm adamantly against. I think a year is a very short time to look at some of the issues that I, and my wife in this case, raised in our letter to you. I think they are answerable. In fact, they already may be answered. I cannot, however, endorse a process where I am not provided the rationale for what I'm supposed to vote on. So I think a year is okay in that regard. I would like you to ask why it is not.
We did, and I thought we got answers from that, but we won't go over that. Any other questions, or, no? Thank you very much, sir. Oh, go, I'm sorry.
One question, you made a quote that I wanted to explore. You said the school board must approve the plan before it goes to the state. Can you be more specific on that? And does that mean that each of the six boards has to approve it? What's the language?
I can't go any further than the following. Excerpts from frequently asked questions last updated 12/1613. If the committee recommends unification, the recommendation must be reviewed by our local school districts, then the State Board of Education would have to approve the recommendation prior to submission to the voters. That's not my words. That was a frequently asked questions, and I don't know if they're still operative, but that's what it said.
That's an important question.
Bob, can you respond to that?
There is a provision, Mr. Chairman, that they are to be, that boards are given the opportunity to review the report. The legislature forbade it, giving them the opportunity to approve it, and the House Education Committee felt what was likely to happen was the way the representatives of each community felt at the beginning was likely to be the way the board still felt, and compromises that had worked out over a period of months and years would quite possibly become undone. So, they gave the opportunity for input, but not approval, and presumably, the committee was to take any input they received and include it in their deliberations.
If you would look at-
Mr. Chairman, did you have something you want to add to that answer?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman. The law requires that the, that the report at some point be submitted to the local school boards for their review and comment. It does not require their approval. And our process is outlined in the December frequently asked questions, and has actually followed. Was that the draft of the report was submitted to the school boards, there were extensive comments received from them, and then we met again in public meeting, debated them, deliberated them, and they are reflected, at least in some sense, in the final report that you have.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I would simply ask you to look at the record of the submission of the final report, as you have seen it, and look at the issue as to whether the elementary boards have even met since that final report was sent to you.
Thank you very much. Are there other members, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members of the public that wish to address the board? Ma'am? And then you next, ma'am. And please state your name.
My name is Allison Anand. I'm a career educator, business owner, and environmental planner. I'm an eighth-generation Vermonter. I was educated in L'Nepelia, Vermont, and at the University of Rochester, and I hold two master's degrees from the University of Vermont. I have been a teacher for over 50 years, and spent about 11 years teaching in Chittin East School District. A few years teaching at the high school level, and a few at the elementary school level. I sent you a memo this morning, I don't know if you got it or not, but I also brought some hard copies if anyone needs them. And regarding this memo, I would just like to say that I believe that the people who crafted Act 153 believed that it would improve education. They did not realize that it was part of a pattern of laws which have the agenda, the overt agenda of improving education, and the covert agenda of privatizing education at public expense, which has been shown actually to widen the achievement gap. So I am more concerned about some of the issues that the previous speaker spoke about. The process of the committee has been pretty much of a railroad process, and people with opposing points of view have not only been discouraged, but they haven't been treated very well in some cases. So I'm sad to report that, but it's true, I've seen it. However, I would like to address a different matter that hasn't really come up. Recognizing that it's the responsibility of this board to work with the existing law, that you have before you a proposal for merger from Chittin East. Given that there's considerable disagreement and concern in the community about this matter, it might seem logical and a democratic spirit to bring it to a public vote. However, in this case, that would be a tragedy on a scale far greater than the issues of this merger, for the simple reason that the law contains elements of corruption. The law is unfair to the voter in several ways. Number one, the issue is so complex that it is impossible to describe a clear ballot question. Number two, this is not a true vote, because not all the facts are being presented. Number three, the voter is in the no-win position, because there is a detrimental consequence to the voter for voting either yes or no. A community voting no loses its supervisory union and bears an unfair tax burden to compensate for the advantage given to the communities voting yes. Yet, the community voting yes loses their school building and/or the real estate assets in the building, making it impossible to reverse the merger if it's considered a failure. A yes vote is encouraged by perceived advantages, especially financial gains, which have no real basis. Using public funds to give financial advantages to people for voting for a certain agenda has been proven illegal in other situations. This is actually bribery. A law so seriously flawed cannot be considered to be in the public good. This raises the matter to the level of a constitutional issue. Referencing Articles 7 and 8 of the Vermont State Constitution, the public has a right to demand that the legislature pass laws that are for the public good, and that elections be without corruption. Neither criterion is met by the present law, Acts 153 and 156, especially Section 17, the mud law. It would be an ironic travesty for the cause of education to unintentionally promote corruption by allowing the matter to come to a public vote. There are many legislators who are aware that the law needs to be improved, and I know they're working on it. I've spoken with many of them. There's no need to rush into this. This is another reason, other than the ones you've already heard, not to rush into this. As a Chittin East School Board District School Board member, I'm a member of the Mount Mansfield Union School Board, I thank you for your efforts on behalf of education in Vermont, and particularly, Secretary, and those that have worked with you. I thank you for your efforts about the No Child Left Behind law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
I have a copy left, I'm saying, and it's very, very hard to stick to it. First, I want to make a comment that-
Your name first, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was going to be in my letter here.
Okay.
My name is Joanne Conley, and I'm from the town of Huntington, and I've been observing the CESU merger planning committee from their second meeting until the present, and with few exceptions. The comment that I want to make, though, quick before I read my statement, is that Mr. Will, Mr. Mathis, you asked a question about whether all the school districts voted to study and assumed that they were all going to be for the continued study and passage of this planning committee's proposal. They voted for a study, but they did not necessarily vote it for the planning commission, planning commissioners, or the committee's proposal. So that's what they actually voted for, not that they agreed with the merger committee. I thought that was really important to make. And the other thing is, though four towns voted for it and four, two towns voted against it, all towns had yes and no. As a matter of fact, across the district, the vote was one-tenth of 1% to being 50-50. So that makes a big difference here. Okay. Dear Secretary Holcomb and members of the State Board of Education, I am Joanne Conley from the town of Huntington, and I've been an observer of the committee. I went at first out of the curiosity of their procedures, but I continued because it was immediately obvious that this group was an overwhelming of one mind. In their third meeting, homework was suggested for the committee members to email their concerns and questions to the chairman, and he would print out their queries to be shared for discussion at the next meeting. I participated in this exercise, even though I was just an observer, and handed out my list of my own questions to the committee. Some of the committee refused my questions and handed my list back to me, or left them on the tables unread. As for the committee, even their own questions, the committee members were never discussed. At the next meeting, an informal vote was taken to assess the support of the merger plan. plan. Out of fifteen, there were two that were not ready to vote, had no decision yet, and one for a no vote. There has been no forum for those no voters and all those undecided citizens to answer their questions, voice their concerns, and receive concrete, realistic, and appropriate answers. At this point, which is early in the study, just the fourth meeting, a very biased committee boarded the train, sped down the track at full speed towards approval of their report. This was a non-stop ride, no need to study or pick up passengers with alternative or opposing opinions. I take extreme exception to the committee's claim that there was representation and support among all the six school districts. I believe the truth is that people chosen from the six boards to be on the committee were either self-appointed or recruited for their support of the merger plan. The committee has repeated many times that they believe they were mandated to get this merger plan passed. There was no discussion or debate with anyone from the communities. The chair limited all public comment to a few minutes with absolutely no dialogue coming from the committee. None of the questions were addressed with community members. Most of the questions were never even discussed by the committee in a public forum. Even the one public forum that they did hold, that they called, there were other meetings that Huntington School called, and probably in other districts, but the one public forum that they did call was absolutely no dialogue occurred. It was a continued, it was simply an extended public comment time. The minority report that you heard and were sent by the one no vote is the valid aspect of the committee, and it's the only valid aspect. This person did an amazing amount of research and all that, and asked very good questions, and has been the most polite person on the committee. I sent you a packet of numerous opinions from lifelong, experienced, career educators for your review. Education happens in the classroom. Why has no one consulted these educators, including our own teachers? They would be the ones that you would ask to write a decent proposal for change and improvement in our schools. Peter Berger put it best, "You can't know what works for children unless you work with children." We have a great system in CESU, as the young men attest to. Children in schools do best when their parents and the community are involved. Vermont's small towns, and their small classes, and the local school boards, because they are our parents of the kids, they create the best environment here for learning. And I come from other states, and I've taught in other states, and our kids went to school in different districts and all that, and this is by far the most welcoming. You talked about making schools welcoming. I never saw anything like this. We had to cut out field trips because it's too dangerous. And I lived in nice suburbs, too. This was not the big city. So, the environment here is protective, and homey, and family, and they care. I see that the teachers care. I actually saw, when I first visited the school and volunteered, I saw teachers hug the kids. We weren't allowed to touch the kids.
Thank you very much.
That's how serious it was.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Helen Keith. I'm a resident of Huntington, or Chittany East Supervisory Union. I'm just about to get my master's in educational leadership at the University of Vermont, and I chose education finance reform as my internship, but my background is early childhood and family support services. I am here because I feel there are key issues that you need to consider, and I am hoping that you will send it back for another year's worth of study, actually, to do study, to evaluate whether in fact there are merits there to go forward with. I do not feel that this has occurred. Some of the key issues for your consideration, if you check the cost-benefit analysis from 2011 when the red was defeated, it is word-for-word, the same as the 2014 cost-benefit analysis. That, to me, as a planner, is like, how could you have three years apart and not be discussing the cost-benefit analysis in a new light? That bothers me. There was little to no discussion taking the time to engage in consensus building or community building in any of this. And I was really hopeful that we would have that time, and then superimposed was the committee's actual self-imposed deadline of getting it to the August 19th board so that it could go to the November 4th, so that it could be implemented next July. Well, there's no reason why it can't be implemented the following July. My second issue is the pre-K through grade four elementary schools. The cost-benefit analysis, either one of them, does not really apply to them, or even mention the younger child, other than to be able to move staff and maybe children, which is not a best practice, or even a good practice to generalize or to assume. This concerns me greatly, that a board might not even understand what it takes, relationship-based learning and understanding of brain development in young children, to provide high-quality services to this age population. I feel like they could get lost. We should be careful to do no harm. We've already got a good system. We don't want to harm kids. We can take care not to harm kids by doing this kind of planning and getting a foundation in place. The plan is too confusing. No one, not the committee, not the agency, not the state board, understands what is being proposed or how it will work. I really feel the sign is, if it's too confusing, vote no. I don't want to see that happen. I want to see a process where we can build consensus. There's little to no data to support the merger that's in this plan. There are enrollment histories, but no projections, exact or not. There is no listing of the assets and liabilities of each elementary school, so that anyone knows what they're getting into financially. This should be public information and a part of the report. Data is missing. It is not going to save money. That is a myth, and I hope people plan to measure this over time if this does go through. It isn't going to help tax rates once the incentives are gone. This is a mythical Band-Aid. The proposed mud, we have to have a sense of humor, that the mud indicates that there is a new treasurer's position, and that will be added to the staff, which is a really good thing. The tax collection responsibilities should also be transferred from the dissolved school districts and their town treasurers to this new position, so that we can finally align the accountability piece with the anger that's happening in the community. So, the education tax is collected by the town treasurer. That responsibility should be transferred to the new district, along with all the supposedly really good things that are going to happen. It would align the tax collection with the decision-making, and people would probably see that that isn't where the decisions are made, where that has to do with their taxes being increased. Yeah, we need some more evidence. Why don't you take it back and come back to us in another year? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Perrin was my supervisor.
I need his name.
Oh, you need to say your name, name and location for the-
Gail Conley, sorry. I retired a year ago when Mark Perrin was my supervisor. Two years before that, I retired from here being an Barry. Twenty-one years ago, I moved to Vermont from Illinois when I met the young Bill Mathis. And from then until now, I think he's the ultimate school administrator.
Let's get back to the subject at hand here.
As you may or may not know, I've written and I'm strongly opposed to this kind of merger. I won't bore you with those fourteen details I have in mind. I would just draw your attention to, I think it's called Attachment A, Item 3. If this new union were to be voted in, if one or two towns vote no, you can assume they may or may not, we don't know. But last time on a red, we had two no votes from two towns. The union will go ahead with the other six towns, but the union board will still supervise our grades five through twelve. So, for example, today, when the Huntington voters go to vote for a budget, they vote for the elementary budget, then they have another budget for the 512 budget. That will have to continue. The merger committee, on numerous times, having read through their paperwork, discussed and rejected the idea of two budgets. There has to be a 612 budget for the no town. If you read Item 3 on Attachment A, it says, "Those citizens that voted not to be in the union have an opportunity to vote on the union budget, of which they're not a part." The new union budget will be elementary schools, the four towns that want to vote for it, and the 612 budget. It'll be a combined K-12 budget. Citizens that are in the town that said no, they don't want to be in that union, and they have their own elementary school, ought not be authorized to vote on the elementary budget in the union. That's the first question you ought to think about. The next question is, today, when we vote on our two budgets, we vote on the elementary budget and the 512 union budget. As most SUs do, we co-mingle those votes before we count them. If two towns are not in the new union, and they have a chance to vote, which they have to have, they have to vote on their 512 budget if they're going to be taxed against it, who are they going to co-mingle their votes with? You can't co-mingle those votes with the union K-12 budget apples and onions. Those kinds of issues, there are lots more of them, but those are the two biggest ones that I believe have to be clearly defined after discussion and debate with the merger committee and with Vaughn and the rest of the agency to make it clear if, in fact, we can take this to a vote. I don't believe there's any way, technically, we can define that to make sense and/or to make it legal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question for Vaughn.
Let me call on the chair of the committee. Is there anything you want to say in conclusion?
No, I would just like to be able to respond to questions of the board at this point.
Okay. Why don't you take a seat, because there may be some questions. Stacy, you have a question for Vaughn, and maybe Vaughn, you ought to come to the table, too, if you don't mind.
I held my question this whole time. I know that never been so successful in holding a question. Vaughn, I wanted to clarify. I found a discrepancy between the way you presented the green sheet and the way the recommended action is written. I just wanted to make sure I understood. I thought I heard you make a pretty clear distinction between, we're not saying as a board if we support the merger as a conceptual idea or not, we are just voting on whether or not to put it to the ballot. But the way I read the green sheet, it says that the board finds that the proposed formation of a Chittany East Modified Unified Union School District is in the best interest of students, the state, and school districts, and that the state therefore votes to approve the attached report. And I just want to make sure when we're thinking about voting, that we understand what we're being asked there.
That's a good question. If you wanted to modify the-
Modify the mud?
No, modify the approved motion, that could be done typically, simply because of statute. That's a fairly standard language, and I probably didn't think about it carefully enough.
Do you want to take a look at that before? Yes, sir.
I would direct the board's attention to 16 VSA, Section 706(c), Subpart B.
In that we're not all handy with statute books here, what do you read it?
Well, the section I direct you to is, the language reads, "If after due consideration and any further meetings as it may deem necessary, the board," referring to this board, "finds that the formation of the proposed union school district is in the best interest of the state, the students, and the school district. It shall approve the reports submitted by the committee, together with any amendments, as a final report of the study committee, and shall give notice of the action to the committee."
This proposed motion is almost verbatim in what you're reading from the statute where it comes from.
That's right. My point is that deviating from the statute may have legal consequences.
You can't split them.
And effectively, the result of accepting the secretary's recommendation is to give voters the choice.
Yes. This is far from a final decision.
Absolutely.
Right. But I just, I guess, in terms of public perception, I think, for me personally, there's a distinction between wanting to give the people who live in those towns the right to vote on it, and whether or not we as a board sanction it as in the best interest of.
It did come from statute.
I see. Okay.
Mark? Yeah, just to follow up, just a little bit more on that. One of the things I got out of what you said, Vaughn, was, is this report in proper form? And I take seriously the message that we send by approving this report is in proper form, because obviously, there's a lot of disagreement over that. And I don't read that in what's in the recommended action.
You don't read what, Mark?
That it's in proper form, the report.
Yeah, I quite know what you're asking.
In other words, if I were to approve the recommended action, according to the way you presented to us first time, is that we are saying that this report is in proper form.
It is in proper form to present to voters, yes. And I think it is in recommended after the secretary who accepted my recommendation.
Okay. Bill?
I've got two questions. The first is that if a town votes against the mud, being a member of it, they continue outside the mud, but the mud could still be formed, right?
Not quite. If a town votes against it, they continue to govern their pre-K through grade four schools through their own school board.
Right.
But if the Modified Unified Union School District is approved, that town would have representation on its board, and its representatives would be proportioned to their current representation on the high school and junior high school board.
Can I just piggyback on that, Bill?
Chumru, you're recognized.
Can I piggyback on?
Yes.
So, just to be clear, the union school districts, so this is an SU, right? Now, you're talking about an SU?
No. No, we have, the Chittany East Supervisory Union is a supervisory union. Within that supervisory union are the following school districts. The Mount Mansfield Union School District, which educates all children, grades five through twelve.
It would continue.
And then there are six constituent elementary school districts, which educate children in each of their communities, grades pre-K through grade four. And so, if this were approved by four of the communities, the Modified Unified Union School District would be formed. And any community voting no would still have its own local elementary school district, but would have representatives on the Unified Union School Board.
It's Stephen. So, and where does it, there is no supervisory union at this point?
What our proposal entails is the following. If all of the districts vote yes, then we would become a supervisory district.
Right. I got that part.
If one or two vote no, then there would continue to be a supervisory union. However, that supervisory union could operate in tandem with the Modified Union School Board. It would have representation from all the communities, and additional representatives appointed from any elementary school board whose community had voted no, who would exercise their votes in a proportional fashion.
So, you're proposing, Vaughn, and I'm sorry, Bill, but how I've seen it done in the past, is that the Unified Union School District would have the, whatever that number is, I saw the breakdown in there, would be overseeing whatever elementary schools and five through twelve, correct?
Correct.
And you have these standalones. Their board operates this one, and this board operates this one.
Yes.
Their supervisory union, you're saying, is going to be the Unified Union- Their supervisory union, you're saying, is going to be the Unified Union Board?
There will be a, there will be...
He's saying yes, and you're saying no.
Well, if I can answer that precisely, there will be a distinct supervisory union. That supervisory union board membership will be identical to the membership on the Modified Union Board with the addition of representatives appointed from the elementary schools who are not part of the Modified Unified Union District. Would you agree with that, Vaughn?
Right. I think we started at a different spot.
Okay. So, Bill, the union board that you're talking about, in current statute, there would be three supervis, how many board members are on these, any of the two little boards, five or three?
Five. Each of our elementary school boards has five members.
So, three of those five would then have three votes on the other, according to SU?
No. Part of our articles, which we have submitted...
Right, I saw the numbers.
There would be proportional voting on the SU equal to the proportional voting that is on the Modified Union Board. So, that would be based on population.
Back to Bill, you had the two questions before you had interruption.
Well, it's kind of difficult not to be interrupted on this one. This really gets back to what Stacy and Mark were getting at, which is the language of the motion. As I read 706(c), this board would vote to say it is okay to take this back to the local towns and vote it, and let them hash out the merits of the issue, that those are the people who should do that determination. Which gets me to thinking, is our authority as a state board really to make sure that all the requirements of 706(b) as to what should be in the proposal are there and are in acceptable form? Is that what we're doing?
That's clearly part of what you're doing. I'm not an attorney, so you're getting into...
I'd like to hear some opinions on that from folks.
I'm not sure I understand your point.
Me too.
Okay. 706(c) requires the state board to vote positively, that this is in the best interest, blah, 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 and then you can take it back to the public to decide.
Correct.
The question in my mind is, is this the proper body to be determining the merits of the issues that were raised that we just heard from about the quality, the cost, or what have you? Or is that really something that the people in the town should decide?
Well, I'm not sure that's a legal question. There's a legal dimension to it. The legal dimension is that your resolution needs to track the language of the statute, or it may not be legally effective. The policy issue is really the deeper one, and that is, what criteria and standards should this board apply in making that determination? And I would submit to you that those standards should consider heavily the following, that a no vote means that the process is stopped. Make no mistake about it, stopped dead in its tracks. A yes vote gives the vibrant community debate, which you heard today, a chance to go forward and allows that to play out in the community.
Yes.
So, I guess what I'm interpreting from this particular conversation is, technically, are we about to approve your report? And I believe that this report that's been submitted actually through Vaughn and the secretary for the board meets the criteria in terms of what's expected to be in it from that big old template that was created a while ago. Is that, I mean, that's, Bill, what you're asking, right?
Yes. The 706(b) has the criteria, and that's clear. Whether it's a satisfactory answer or not is another matter entirely. And this is what throws me, is the language that's in the statute is, we have to determine what's in the best interest of that, which is a more stringent criteria than simply authorizing to go to the voters. That's a much stronger question and a much stronger threshold or hurdle.
I agree completely with Bill. I feel really uncomfortable making a decision as to what is best for all the students of the state. But I could feel much more comfortable turning it over to those that this decision really affects.
Yeah.
It's the two in one.
So, is there a motion on the floor?
No, I was, I'm the chair of this board.
I'm asking you a question.
No, there is not a motion pending. Is there a motion to be made?
I make a motion.
Yeah.
You wish to submit what was...
I have it too. That the State Board of Education finds that the proposed formation of the Chittenden East Modified Union School District, you know what, this is where I think people are having a problem. It should say that they're submitting the Unified Union School District report and articles of agreement. That's what we're approving for you to bring forward, right? I mean, I'm asking you. Okay.
Yeah, I don't like this. I think, you know, this language is almost verbatim from the statute.
I know, but I guess what I think people are saying is that they're approving the report. They're approving that the report was submitted properly and with all the information. And then, it's not, it's certainly not up to this board to make a conclusion. It's up to the citizens in those towns, which is what I think we're all advocating, that the people in the towns make that decision. We're approving the report that they've submitted that's been approved by the agency. I mean, that's how I read it.
From a policy point of view, in reviewing that report, you know, it's the responsibility of this board also to look at, you know, is this a wise proposal? And knowing full well that we don't have the final say on it, but...
So, I guess I interpret it as what's being presented to us had its due diligence from the way that the makeup of the committee is presented in law and gone through the agency. That's how I interpret it. That's my interpretation. If you want me to read this exact...
No. So, Sean Marie has made the motion to recommend that the state board take, find the proposed formation of Chittenden East Modified Union District, et cetera, that's been presented. Is there a second to that?
Could you just, before a second, could you just clarify again exactly what the motion is?
What is she?
Is it motion from here?
Exactly what was presented to us from the agency.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Is there a discussion on that? Yes, Krista.
I do feel like this is an issue we struggled with a lot last year, and talking about imposing it from a state level. But this is something that's coming from the ground up, and I feel very strongly that we have talked about the benefits of bringing together this district, especially this district, the supervisory union is so interesting, because you are already doing it five through 12, not even seven through 12. As a community, you'd already decided years ago, okay, well, we're going to include five and six in this because it works. And so, you backed it up. So, this is just, it looks like the next step from the ground up. And I do think, this is what's in the best interest of, if we're looking at this, what's in the best interest of the student, the state, and the school districts involved, that this report gives a good description of why they think it's what's best. And I don't think anything in here would prove to me that it's, I shouldn't allow the voters of those communities to decide that is what's best. We're not saying that this is the only option, but this report is, gives a lot of great evidence. And I admire the people that spoke up, and especially the woman that wrote the minority report, and that's very important within this process to be a lone voice sometimes. I respect that. That's part of this report. And I think giving it to the voters and allowing them to make a decision is the only thing that I think is consumable to do. I wouldn't want to stop that. And the voters might look at the minority report, they might have more questions, and might say no. All towns might say no. And then, you would go back to drawing board, people would voice their concerns, but I almost feel like this is where the campaign for this starts. And we don't even know right now who the governor is, the Republican candidate, because we don't know until the primary.
You might be getting out of order here.
Well, no, I'm saying, the primary is October 26th, or, sorry, August 26th. So, that's the primary to find out who's running against the governor. I think this is ample time for a community to grapple with these questions, and I hope they're public forums. Yeah, I'm answering that. No time.
All right. Stacy?
Yes. I think actually Krista covered. I don't need to.
Okay. All right, so the motion is before the board to approve the motion that was presented to us by the agency. It's been moved and seconded.
And I just, I'm going to stress that the part of the motion that it says to vote, it says, "Vote to approve the attached report of the Chittenden East Supervisory Union." And that is what I believe we are doing.
Yes. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No.
No.
Okay, we'll go to a roll call vote. Will you call the roll? Perry?
Yes, Karen?
No.
Wannberger?
Yes.
Morgan?
No.
Pollard?
Yes.
Ullman?
Yes.
Aman.
Yes.
So, I tie that as 5-1?
The motion passes on a 5-1 vote. 2. 5-2, pardon me.
Who's the second vote?
Morgan. Morgan. Congratulations, best of luck.
Thank you.
Wish you well.
And thank you.
The board will take a 10-minute recess. Agenda item, I want to go back very briefly to earlier discussion about the state's rescissions and the need to reduce the budget. Someone from the agency said something about that the board's budget would be reviewed to see if there were places where it could be cut there and for the purposes of the agency. Jill's laughing because I think it was her idea. One thought is that we, the board, instead of buying everyone from the agency lunch, we start charging them for lunch.
Thanks, Jill.
I think a surcharge for the service is necessary, too.
You've just gone from peanut butter and jelly to tuna fish.
Ooh.
Onto an easy item. Item L, pre-K rulemaking.
I have to confirm, there was nothing in the packet with this, right?
No, but it's been presented since...
There was a green sheet that came out late.
Yeah. It's...
I have one right on here.
Yeah, here it is. There it is.
Okay, okay. Karen's very ordinary.
Here's this, you can have this. So, proceed.
Okay. Karen Edwards, Agency of Education.
Manuel Fonska, Agency of Education as well.
And we're here to ask you to initiate rulemaking for the state board rules that result from the passage of Act 166, the universal access to pre-K bill. And we have, that bill charges the agencies of education and human services to develop rules, jointly develop rules that address the provisions of the legislation. We have a small group from the agencies that has been working on a draft. It's a very close-to-the-bones draft. These rules are really time-sensitive because they affect next year's school budgets, and those budgets are being developed now. So, we've been very aware of that, and we will have a set of rules that will be publicly available on September 4th. We put ourselves on a very tight timeline.
Now, my memory from the EQS rules that we just went through, that was an eight-month process?
Yes.
So, how is that timing going to come together with the need for this? I mean, it has no effect on what I think about what you're proposing today, but I'm just curious.
Well, we recognize that what we put out September 10th will not, September 4th will not have public comment, will not have had public comment yet, but at least it will give people developing those budgets an idea of what the direction is. So, that's one of the difficulties. The other one is that there are provisions that were in the former pre-K rules that are not in Act 166, so we're in kind of a gray area now about how those get dealt with, and we're working on some guidance for that as well. I don't know if I answered your question.
So, to be clear, they are on, we are on an abbreviated timeline for doing this, in part because school districts need to be able to budget in the coming budget cycle? That means we need to be signaling what some of the factors they need to consider are through rulemaking.
Is there a way to speed that rulemaking process up?
They're working really hard and really fast.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. It's not humanly possible.
There actually is one thing that you could consider. We generally come to the state board twice, you know, once for discussion and once for initiating the rulemaking. If you could consider, when we come back, that might cut a month off, that we could do it in one month, one meeting rather than two.
But you would come back to us once more with the rules, is that right?
We'll be coming in September with the draft of the rules, then we go through the ICAR, public, you know, Public Common, LCAR. But we come back to you at one point, and we're hoping February, March, that we're able to do that. And if you would consider condensing that to one month rather than two, that would help a bit.
Why don't we take that up when you come back?
Right.
But that's, I would think, would be possible, but it'd be premature to make that decision today.
Right.
Any questions on this?
So, we should have a substantive agenda item in September that discusses this?
But we need, they need action today to initiate the rulemaking process with respect to the...
Okay.
Have you made that motion, Bill?
I think I did.
And Sean Marie seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. No need for a roll call, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, if we wanted to see what you might be bringing forward in terms of looking at the pre-K language, we could look at the stat, the bill that was passed?
It's very close to the bill. It's got very close to the bill. I did make a handout, if you'd like it, that it tells you what the issue is from the bill we have been working on, and what our timeline has been, what our timeline is going forward. If that would be helpful.
She made a handout for us?
Yes, oh, yes, yeah. Please feel free to distribute that. Here are nine, 16th of September.
I'll double check. I'll tell you. I'm just confirming with Karen.
Did they go which way, either way? Thank you.
I already have that, so you go ahead and keep it.
All right, moving on to the last agenda item, M, statewide assessment, appropriate use of test scores. Now, I'll turn this over to Bill, but I want to say in advance, I know we've been going through this for two or three meetings, and in reading this over, Bill, I was mighty impressed with what we have here. So, with that positive thing, please lead us through this.
Yes, I should take about the same amount of time as we spent on Chittenden East on this one. We've been over this two or three times. My only recommended change on this one is to change the title and say, "Statement Resolution on Assessment and Accountability," and delete the version eight and the heading stuff.
I like the July 4th, though.
Yeah.
Independence Day.
Yeah, well, it's kind of neat doing it on Independence Day. The changes have been those things that you have recommended. There's nothing new here that we haven't seen before. We were in a position to vote last month, but it was not warranted for a vote, and so that brings it up to today. This is very highly compatible with the secretary's letter that just went out, that we were discussing earlier. And so, with that, I would move the adoption of the statement resolution.
Some move.
And seconded by Sean Marie. The only thing I would add, I mean, this is an incredible statement, so I think we really need to think, maybe between the agency and the board, of how we get this resolution out and this position that we've taken. I mean, this is, accompanies what Rebecca in the agency has just done, I believe, and not to steal her limelight, but only to...
Go ahead.
Reinforce the message.
Reinforce the message. So, I guess I would, I would, you know, let's think about how we can get this out, and maybe what the agency could do to get it out as well.
The web, the new website's awesome. We could, could we add it there?
Absolutely.
Krista?
I loved your letter, first of all, and I loved this draft, too. It's been such a work in progress, and it's been, it's amazing from the first draft to now, it's even better, so thank you, Bill. I'm just wondering if we could pair those two together? And just as an educator, I would love to get both documents almost. Just, never mind as an educator, maybe parents, too. Is there any way to send it out on the weekly memo and ask principals or superintendents to send it to their list? I think having both of those pairs together. Because I was able to see your letter, I listened to you on VPR, which you did a great job, and then went online and looked at it. But I was just thinking, as an educator, I didn't get it from my school, and that would be very nice to start the school year with that message, coming from the secretary and from the state board. That there's such a strong stance for teachers, and I think it gives that, teachers come back to school, this little bit of boost, and it puts another little boost in your step, and just think would be a great way, just to share that.
I think we would leave it with the agency, knowing that we don't, we can't really ask you to do anything specifically, but we think that there's a very, what I'm hearing from the board, there's a very strong message here from both the secretary and the board, and we would suggest to the agency to do whatever you could to get this information out. And if there's more that we as a board can do, let us know, and we'd be more than happy to do it.
I think we should get the statement out to NASB and also to the chief's organizations, and if you can do that, that would be great. Or we could coordinate that in some fashion. We should also get it to the major national education associations as well.
All right, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It's unanimous, and Bill, once again, thank you for all your hard work, and it's a great statement, and let's hope it has some effect south of here. Anything else that a board member would like to bring up before today's meeting? Our next meeting is in September 16th, and I think I heard earlier it's in southern Vermont in Springfield, almost southern Vermont. And where is it in Springfield, do we know?
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
We hope to know by the 15th.
All right.
The 15th of September?
Oh, September.
Well, if you're hard up for a site in southern Vermont, I'm sure you could find you someplace in New Haven.
Okay.
I second that.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Cheers. Yay, Morgan.
Morgan, thank you.